Which stands on nation under God, individual, the liberty of the United States.
Okay, the additional appropriation for the housing development with, um, uh, Solomon and all, do you have anything you want to add to that or just?
Uh, just that as you saw, the commissioners just approved the form of the documents and authorized Chuck to execute them at closing, ending council approval of the additional.
Okay, so we have an additional, the sheriff, fifteen thousand from county general to, uh, uh, medical dental, we have CDC, which is the three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, Wella Creek Housing Development, and then we have the drug free commission, fourteen thousand treatment intervention and criminal justice, that were advertised a little late and are up for discussion and vote now.
Yes.
I thought the fifteen thousand. Sheriff's. Five hundred. From. To the. Correct?
I believe that was the discussion too.
Because I think I only advertised.
Okay. I do remember that discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve the additionals with the one correction, seventy-five hundred for the sheriffs.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A little second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Then we had some, uh, some budget discussions, um, you know, Laura needs to be able to publish the budget, so we need to decide, there were some open, open items in our discussions. There was the Spirit Fork Navigator, CDC Project Coordinators, Rayer, uh, Assistant Rayer, Auditor Stiften, Clerk Stiften, Clerk one, uh, part-time, full-time, EMA, part-time, requested probation, Office Administrator go full-time, EMA, replace the old truck, transmission failing, um, maintenance, increase director's wages, oil and water, increase district court corner coordinators' wages, create new development, or excuse me, HR, uh, department, and then part-time wage increases, and then we had, uh, community foundation, uh, fifteen thousand, county.
I want to correct on the clerk's stipend. That's. Stipend.
Yeah.
We're doing twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. But I, I thought reading that didn't say that there were, which would, I guess would remove from the twenty twenty-five budget, but this came in at the end of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four is the last year, they're still eligible for that stipend.
I feel.
But, yeah.
Talking about the twenty twenty-five budget.
Right.
Tell me what you want to do.
Yeah.
Yes, the auditor's office and the board's office are qualified for the stipend for. So it depends what you want to do.
Yeah, I was, I was just pointing that out just for a fact more for the board than what that needs to be left, left in, in here now, the auditor's every year, but it's not just an odd year. Those are, you know, Laura has to publish this, so, you know, um, I guess at this point, are we wanting to decide what we want in, what we don't want in, do we want her to publish at the, you know, with all this in, then we'll work the final decisions out later, you know, he needs to have answers, he knows how to, how to proceed forward. We did, uh, you know, a couple of things that I think are very important for this year to be in the budget is the HR director, um, and then the part-time wages, because we, maybe I should say I more less than we, but, you know, made a commitment to the part-time folk that we express their wages and stuff in the twenty twenty-five year.
Just a little bit. Thank you. Part-time increases. Right now, budget's five percent off. But nothing was changed for part-time. Done. Plus the department has put in for five percentage. So. And then HR is separate. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, I just kind of went down the list, we don't have to say yea or nay to the whole list of untied. I guess more for me is, how's, how's the board want to, to handle this, so, so you can go on, publish and forward, you know? You know, is any of this, you know, these were the, the vote points that we, we kind of called out during our meetings, so, you know, does the board want to, you know, keep it as published, or, you know, publish it with, you know, all the, the people and so forth and changes in it, uh, you know, adding the numbers that Sheila presented to Laura on the, to everybody else in emails, on the HR department, and then the wage increases for the part-time, Nathan and I have been working on that quite a bit, and, you know, we've come up with probably, you know, using a high number of about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty, so I would say we'd use a hundred and forty to cover, uh, classifications, I'll let Nathan just go into a short, um, I'm just kind of how, how we laid out the classifications for that.
Sure, so, as we overhauled the matrix last year, we adopted a slightly modified version of the state's classification system, so that we had a fairly consistent across-the-board way of determining where a position's wages should be based on the regional data we had. So you have your labor trades and crafts matrix, that includes county highway, but also maintenance and, uh, solid waste, as opposed to having matrices that were strictly just based on department heads, that were based on similar job types. And so what we have proposed as at very least a starting point for these conversations on how to overhaul the part-time wages is to base it on that similar structure, so a part-time highway driver is going to be paid a rate that is in some, that's some way tied to the labor trade crafts matrix and not just a random number. And so where we still, you know, initially, as I had had some conversations with Ken and with Mr. Tankersley about updates to the matrix rules, I think Kevin had first actually initiated the idea of maybe having just a flat part-time rate for each classification, so anyone who falls in the professional administrative technical matrix would have a PAT rate for part-time, and anyone in the clerical, office machine operator technician classification would have one flat co-mat rate. But we, as we started looking at that, we realized that, for instance, if we have a part-time building inspector, which is, I think, in the lowest tier on that PAT matrix, and we have a part-time nurse who's got an RN or a BSN, has one of those qualifications, and, and a part, a full-time situation would be much higher, does it really make sense that they're both getting the same rate of pay? That's sort of one of the issues I think that our old thrown-together system has landed us in. So as this sort of starting point for the conversation, what we have proposed is that for every part-time position, and some are a little easier than others, you find the full-time equivalent in the appropriate matrix. So for instance, we know that a highway laborer with a CDL is tier-two of that matrix. And we're going to go the very first entry level wage in that, which I think this year is twenty-eleven an hour, maybe twenty-one something, and with the exception of the sheriff's office and EMS because of the schedules they work, every matrix, it's a two-and-a-half percent climb between jobs, so a PAT one is, say, sixty percent of the base rate, PAT two is sixty-two point five, and so on, so it's all consistent across the board. And so for these departments, we would find that equivalent, so we would say a part-time highway laborer with a CDL is two steps below the full-time laborer or five percentage points. So if the highway laborer is paid at an entry level, seventy-five percent of Superintendent Kruger's wage, then the part-time wage would be seventy percent of Gary's wage. There's flexibility, it's going up or down as we see fit, but at least as a starting point, that was a clean, consistent way to make sure that part-time wages reflect job decisions, expectations, and there is some segregation, like I said, between a part-time building inspector and a part-time nurse. And for a couple of employees in the county, it would be a fairly small increase, but for most, it would at least be a dollar or two an hour, I think.
How does the board want to proceed forward? My question is, um, how, if we leave it all the way it is presented, how far over the budget will we be? Do we have numbers? I didn't.
Yeah, I, I print those out.
Laura, is there any other questions? So. You've got the estimated revenue.
Forward, yes. The estimated budget for everything.
That, budget number I heard.
Right, but, but I would prefer, project proposal, prefer that you look at the funds. So county general is the primary fund, and county general's estimated revenue is right at eight point three. It could probably go up to eight point five. Might even be able to, might even be able to stretch it to nine, but you've got a budget for the county general at ten million, so you're going to be over a million dollars. I have never come into this council not saying that you should never have a budget higher than what your estimated revenue is. And no one's ever listened to this, so.
Another question. Expected balance.
Expected balance after, so I go in and I look at what's in, in the fund right now, and I take whatever's left over in the budget, this is with the, with the idea that all of the budget would be spent. So if I look at county general and I take what the current money is, and then subtract out what's left over in the budget to spend, this is going to be the balance, four million. So with that, your budget at ten million will pass, and the CLG will say, okay, we've got enough money there to cover, but you are, you are taking out of that, that, I don't want to say the, I don't want to call it a savings, but it's what's left over from previous years. So how often do you want to do that?
I'm not, I'm not making any suggestions, I'm just trying to figure out what you can add.
Right.
So that, that four million is what you consider, the, the what's left, cash reserves?
Right, it's the cash reserve that's left.
And here's a pass that's moving around a million, right?
Well, it has, it has grown over the last few years, so back several years ago, it was only a million dollars. Now, I'm not trying to bash council. This has not been because of what council's done. The departments always come in and ask for more than what they need, and for some reason they have not spent it. So therefore, your, your residual or your cash balance has grown, which is a good thing. I mean, you can pat all these departments on the back for it. However, when you allow them to have a budget higher than what they need, that's the same as leaving money on the table. They could spend it, they haven't, they've been really good about it, yeah.
I just, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, because I, I didn't get the email, so, didn't see it.
So, so when I put this email out, the county has a hundred and fifty-eight funds. County has a hundred and fifty-eight active funds. There are seventy-eight funds that are not budgeted at all. I think I didn't change, did I change it on yours, Tim? I think there's like.
Eighty-eight, eighty-eight not.
Eight, eighty-eight are not budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay, and then there's like seventy-eight that are, or?
Seventy that are budgeted.
Seventy are budgeted?
Yeah.
And then I knocked down to, there's like ten.
Ten is crucial.
Then there are ten crucial budgets. This is, these are your primary budgets, this is your county general, number one, and then you've got lit public safety, that's a crucial fund. Um, you've got statewide nine-one-one and PSF, the very important funds. Those are the funds to watch and to make sure that enough money is coming in to cover the expenses of that particular department. CUMCAT development, that money, the money that comes in and funds that, that particular fund is coming from property taxes. Okay, but it is slowly dwindling. Two years back, we had probably had seven hundred thousand dollars plus in that fund, but we don't have that anymore. And council has wisely decided to move a lot of the expenses from that fund into other areas, such as it's coming out of CDC, or county general, or both. So, so it's dwindling, you have very little left in that fund, um, and you can, and there's not much left to, you know, you can use a little bit, there's probably a couple hundred thousand there. But what comes out of this fund is your, is mostly your IT. IT has become extremely expensive. It probably, probably costs this county five hundred thousand dollars a year for IT alone. So that's a fund that we can make last. The CUMCAT development also covers a hundred thousand dollars out of maintenance for the repairs that maintenance does for the entire county. So between the IT and maintenance, I think we've got one, two or three hundred thousand dollar budget in that, you know? I don't have it on this sheet. CUMCAT development, yes.
What are you looking at? Oh, okay.
Eleven thirty.
Four hundred and thirty-six thousand, or, four, yeah, four hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Budgeted for four hundred and thirty-six thousand?
Uh, expected balance, that's, that's what that is.
Okay.
So you want budget.
That's what your budget is?
Yeah.
So it's just under, you won't have much left for twenty twenty-five. Your health, eleven fifty-nine, health is also a fund that is, that the revenue comes from property tax. Now, the health department filed with the state, council and commissioner, one or the other, both said, yes, file for this SB four because it was legislation that came out last year. So this SB four is basically funding that department at three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. In order for the state to fund that department, you as a county are required to cover a certain amount, this year, you're required to cover them by sixty thousand dollars, that's not much. But because this, this requested money was done by the health department, and, and council never had any say in this, why, they did not cover the entire cost of that department. So in order to cover it, you're going to have to, you're going to have to levy the property tax for that department, and you've got almost two hundred thousand dollars.
What did you find out from the health department about the, uh, you know, they wanted us to cover all the wages? Can you guys go meet with them afterwards?
The, well, it was just, they were looking at the, the three positions and covering them, which are, uh, they're going to do under contract, so, um, they're, it'll be a contract with whatever individual that they put in that position, and I can't tell you off the top of my head what, what each contract paid, but, uh, it was, it was on a per need, per use basis, so that way there would be no, you know, there would be no added benefits. Thank to see what that workload would end up being and how, you know, that's beginning, that's not saying that it'll stay that way forever, that was how much actually personally. That was. Immunization nurse, uh, septic, uh, and preparedness.
Are we just going to give them the sixty thousand dollars that we're obligated to give them, or are we giving them a hundred and ninety?
No, you cannot operate that department with a hundred and ninety.
Yeah, get the money from, uh?
No, because they have already filed with the state, filed with the state like that, and the state approves it. So, my opinion, my opinion, before these are filed with the state, they need to see you, or they should be able to. And it's my opinion.
Great opinion.
They did this, they, they did this last year as well, and when they did it last year, they put things like gas and oil in their budget, and I kind of off the dill a little bit, not really bad. It, it's been worse.
Not bad, really.
But I said, how can you budget for gas and oil, you don't have a vehicle. We don't pay gas and oil unless you have a vehicle that's owned by the county, then we pay. And so they came back at me and said, well, that's our savings. So they use this money from the state, made some of it savings, and made the taxpayer pay the cost of their department. Operation staff. So, you know, I'm not the one that says, yes, you are, but if you don't know about it, you can't say it.
How would we fix that? We have to make that motion at council.
Council needs to be aware, they need to, the, the health department should come, and it's not just the health department.
No, in general.
But they, they should come before the council, there's, you know, they're supposed to come before, before this year's, but the council should see these numbers so they know.
And one, one thing, and I know we talked with Teresa a little bit about it and stuff earlier, make Laura aware of it, but I, and I have a meeting with Kevin sometimes, he said he's going to give me a call every day, but that's one of the things we want to talk about is getting an ordinance put together for the county to where, you know, if grants are filed, you know, those that we can control, you know, we're made aware of them prior to it, same thing with, you know, with stuff like this, you know, it, you know, we, before things are filed downstate, they should, well, they should come in front of, like, especially the health, you know, it should come in front of their board, get approved, I imagine that, uh, Nathan runs his, in front of his board before it goes to the next step and all, and any of them that work for boards, they need to get approval from that board, and then it needs to come to us to get our approval, and then it goes downstate files, so we know how to manage the year, otherwise, you know, like here, if something happens, not here we set. So hopefully, here soon, once again, you know, don't address a problem until a problem arises, how we see a problem, and we'll get it addressed and come up with something to try to do our best to protect the county in the future.
Okay, so among the, these ten crucial funds, I have in there motor vehicle highway. Motor vehicle highway gets its revenue from a separate tax, and so it's basically, I want to say it's separate entity to a certain extent, doesn't take property taxes locally, it has its separate funding. And so generally speaking, it's pretty good. So the managers of the highway department have, have been on a pretty even keel with watching funding. So, so I wouldn't say that's really, really important, you, but you should review it. Reassessment, one of those funds that honestly, I don't quite understand. According to the assessor, it is by law that you fund reassessment, and the money comes from property taxes. But I don't quite understand if money comes from a property taxes, what makes a difference if you have this reassessment fund or you, or you, and a set department through county general, doesn't, six of one and a half a dozen of them. That makes sense? No? Public safety, I think is in fairly good shape, money for that fund comes from local So it's pretty good. I still think its budget is higher than the estimated revenue, but it's still not in there. Lit economic development, that's in pretty good shape as well. Can you tell me what I've got on that, Tim?
Yes. For the budget?
Yeah.
One point eight, ten?
Estimated revenue?
One point four.
So it's a little bit more than the estimated revenue. But it's in good shape, would you not agree, Nathan?
Yeah, we have a good balance.
We have a good balance. Aviation, they're in fairly good shape, their money also comes from property taxes. I think their budget might be a little bit more overestimated revenue, but you, as council, can decide whether you want that to be over from the property taxes, have to give them money to cover their budget, know what I mean?
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should I begin?
Um, I don't know how all of you feel, but I don't know that any of us are prepared to sit here and go through each item that can spoke about, make a decision tonight. So if that's something somebody else feels that they already do, I guess we can have that discussion, but if we're not, then I would make a motion to publish, over-publish, and then we can make decisions moving forward. And also, you forgot the fifteen thousand dollars for community foundations.
It's on the bottom of your.
But I would like for you to have a discussion about the entire department. I don't feel like the entire council realized that an entire, entire department figured for this, for this HR, I think everybody was thinking just an HR person. So the budget itself is right at two hundred thousand. It's coming out of county general, I think it's a discussion, and I would like to have I think it's a discussion, and I would like to have a majority rules there, whether I publish this or not.
Is there a chief? Definitely need an HR first. Avenue, bold at the.
So, I've started looking into that. Uh, I've made one contact already, and she basically would be outsourced. And you wouldn't have to have necessarily an assistant, and they would be there pretty much so 24/7.
Would they cover the job responsibilities and the job description?
Well, that's something we'd have to work on, but they have to follow the federal laws. So, yes, they would have to follow.
Right, so would the position we created? And then they'd do a whole lot of other things that would alleviate stress off Kevin's office, our auditor's office.
It would all be outsourced. We would give them so much money a year to take care of it, and they would do it all.
You know what that dollar amounted?
I do not yet.
Well, if we do, like you did, like you said, and we just, you know, publish the budget, and we got time to.
Make a decision.
Make a decision, because I talked to Benton County, what they did. I went over there the other day, and, uh, they don't have one. Then I talked to Jasper County, and they have one. I haven't been to White County yet.
Ass County has one.
Haven't been, Jasper County has one, but I'm not even gonna say what they say about that. It's not the best for, they, uh, they have issues. But, uh, I was gonna talk to White County, Fisher Downers, friends, haven't seen him yet. In that budget, if I remember right. Yeah, moving payroll over. And, I don't know, Ass.
Get removed out of the auditor's budget and into the HR budget. That way you're.
That followed the board of accounts.
Say board of accounts, yes. Yes, I have to do my due diligence.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Okay, so, with our time clocks getting, having issues, several of them are down. Um, we have been looking at other programs as far as either with different, a couple of different areas where they have other things that can help us with HR. It, um, a few of them have, like, onboarding with HR, so it'll lessen up maybe our current person as far as payroll, and maybe alleviate to where we can kind of do it on a more easier level than the kind of money we're looking at. I mean, especially with the budgets, the way they're sitting.
Do you use LAL?
Yeah, and see, that's.
That's, that's what Benton County says, they use LAL as a payroll, and they do some of their HR work.
Yeah, and that's one of the companies we looked at, and we were looking at a company down in Lafayette.
You, uh, talked Sean LAL?
Sean and Andrew.
Okay, well, I got that Benton County gave me.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause they already do our financials and our property tax.
Well, I don't know if we could have, like, maybe commissioners or commissioner's decision, I guess, two to hire, but we could get maybe two or three, uh, you could have three council people, right? If you meet with a body like this, point stuff to us. You. You, because you've lived it eight years.
I would, I would suggest also, if, if that's the route that we want to go, to, you know, do more investigating and stuff in it, I would suggest that we have our attorney involved, because they've done.
I agree, they've done so much, too. Sheriff's Department, maybe, have a big, a lot of employees there with jails, so if we could all, I know we can only have three council people there, but to report back, I don't know. Do you want to help there? Do I will, but I just think that we need to look into it, 'cause 200-some thousand, I think they're gonna have trouble with people, you know, I don't know how many elected people we have, and none of those people have to.
But their county employees would have to.
Yeah, I don't know how many, how many elected versus how many county employees we have. I don't know how many county employees will.
But that's the whole point of having the HR person.
I know, if in a perfect world, that works, but this isn't a perfect world. We already have people take their birthday off, you know? What's HR gonna do about that?
Maybe, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what, uh, every place I've ever been in my lifetime working that's had 100 employees always had an HR department, and also, I'm not sure what, uh, rent HR departments are out there, what, what kind of things they have to, uh, to offer a county or anybody on an HR side, 'cause I've never investigated. I, uh, I do know from an HR department, you know, I know, as, you know, we've discussed with others and stuff, I mean, it's more than just payroll, it has to do with, you know, making sure we stay compliant in our training. We're not compliant on our training, sexual harassment, quit protocol, and, you know, different things.
Firing, firing.
Yeah, you know, but, and, and, you know, I think we're all open to discussion, always want to try and stay open to discussion. But I think we also need to realize that, you know, what's also being talked about here is not, I mean, one thing, the 200-some thousand budget, take 40-some thousand of that out, because, you know, that's, uh, that would be somebody into that department, wouldn't it, in a budget, so that's just one point. And then the fact of, like I said, making sure that.
You also need to add in per benefit.
Those are all added in.
Yeah, not the budget I received.
They were those green line items.
Oh, yeah.
They were, I added them at the bottom of what I put out for you, and that's where it came out to the 212,000.
Yeah.
Now, through that, part of that budget, payroll per, payroll per comes out of my office. So, if you adopt $212,000 budget for this department, then the auditor's office plus 40-some thousand.
And part of the budget was to develop the office, so like, things that won't occur again, like a computer and all the furniture and.
Yeah, but I guess this, at this point, for our budgeting purposes, you know, uh, it's, you know, there's questions that people want answered there, again, we need the budget, so do we want?
I would make the motion again to publish the budgets as are, as presented, and then have these discussions later so that we can decide what we're doing with the department.
We have, we have a motion on the floor to.
So, that would be without the 217,000?
No, that would be with it, all, all the budgets as presented to us during the.
So, I just want to say something, for, for my constituents, we're over 2 million bucks, and we're gonna have to try to cut some of this back. And now, we're gonna come in here and add another 200,000 on top of the 2, 2 million. Ain't right, folks. We need to do better for our constituents.
Not just with an HR department, though, across the board. It's not just the HR department that's causing an overage, the overage was there.
If you take an employee out of the auditor's office, she was already short one before, now you're gonna have to put that employee back into.
But you're also taking the responsibilities out of the auditor's office as well. It's not like we're saying, here's more.
Jennifer wears many hats.
Okay, it's not like we're saying, here's more work and one less person. We're saying, here's one less person and less work.
I guess, does White.
There's a motion in a second.
We have, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I got some, imagine that.
All right.
How about part-time wages? That wasn't even in our budget, was it?
No.
So, we're gonna publish the budget, don't you think we ought to publish the budget with at least, uh, curtsies giving the 2.38% raise, and the cost of living for the feds, 2.63. So, we ought to at least, uh, publish part-time. I think part-time should go up as much as we published full-time, 5%, I think we should probably set it 5% for part-time, because, but then, I mean, but this is what, this, the other places that I, like, board meetings are giving.
The, the number of, the rough number that has been laid out at this point in time with, for the part-time wages includes 5%. So, the 140,000 would be carrying the, the part-time wages, you know, in the categories that we set with full-time folks, minus the 5%, bringing them down, and then, uh, that's with 5% increase if that went across.
But it's in the budget, this 15, 12 million, 2 million over budget, that needs to be put in?
Whatever department's put in, so typically, this is what I've noticed in this budget. Typically, the council said 5%, and what I've seen is that they've gone into last year's budget and did a 5% increase on last year's, whatever last year's budget was, by 5%. Technically, that was not a good way to do it, because last year was an unusual year since wages increased. And so, the budget, not knowing what you were going to make the budget for, the budget was higher than what it needed to be. So, when I was putting the budget together for the, be published, I went through and took actual wages that people were getting and increased it by 5%. That's what I said, to receive a whole budget with the published side of it. The published side has been revised to show that increase for full-time employees. I did not do that for part-time employees. One, I didn't know what you were going to set their wages at, and two, it's hard to determine how much to actually give them, because you don't know if that part-time employee is coming in two days a week or if they're coming in four days a week. So, I've left that part-time budget alone, not include, no raises are included in that $10 million.
I take my, to include the part-time.
Well, I thought the way we were gonna do that was that the part-time is, they were gonna pay out the budget of their overtime, but their part-time money that we have, that is the way we're gonna control that. If we see a big spike or something coming up where, you know, all of a sudden, somebody's kicked $1,000 over in their overtime budget, and there's a problem there, it's done. The way I think to control that is to let it go to overtime budget, or the part-time budget. If they stay relatively close to the same, I'm sure they're gonna increase a little bit. But, you know, most of the time, we don't have a lot of people coming in here asking, you know, for extra part-time money. I understand, you know, my small town here, but the, uh, that, that's where I think we've been in. All of a sudden, you see a spike in somebody's part-time money, and, you know, we, well, why is that? You know, or all of a sudden, you got maybe part-time people who say around, who are like, oh, what are they doing? So, uh, you know, that's where that was controlled, and that's why I thought that Mike's question was already there. You know, we're gonna give a big increase in part-time money, we're gonna get, you know, you're gonna be all paying for it, so you get part-time. You know, my, my info's coming from the sheriff. You can't spend the part-time money, you can't get anybody to work at $17 an hour.
No, I don't mean increase it.
Where you can get somebody to work, and then, you know, leave it up to him, and, you know, of course, we're an alternate decision on that. You know, if it's out of hand, and you just say, and we can't afford that.
I, and, yeah, I see that, if I'm understanding your point correctly, I mean, if we, I take, if we leave, if we leave what we have budgeted in part-time money, we don't increase the money, we just increase wage, then we increase the amount of hours that they have available to offer other people for, for part-time work that needs to be done. So, I mean, that's a way to increase the wage. But do we have any concern that that decreases the amount of hours that the departments have?
That's gonna cause curse. Sorry, don't mean to throw you like.
Well, I can say that real late, maybe, if I'm being, problem is causing me, because Jeff is exactly right. I, I can't get guys to commit $13 an hour, so what I gotta do is I gotta pay both guys time and half, and see next month what. I'd say, part-time, pay 40, 50 dollars an hour, as opposed to 18 dollars an hour to commit, or my shifts. I just had a guy go in the military a week ago, he's gonna be gone for a year, excuse me. One of my deputies is retired in February, I'll be able to hire his pop, and I'm gonna have to fill part-time positions from February until September. That's gonna kill my budget, and I don't have any choice, I can't, nobody, that's possible. But you'll see next month when I gotta commit, ask for some overtime, because the regular officers are gonna fill in for that. I can't get part-time, guys commit 13 months, and you can't blame, Jeff's exactly right. I've had to fill, monsters, $5.45 an hour as opposed to 18 dollars an hour. Exactly right. That's my dilemma. That's my. Then you gotta earn out. You got guys, pay the house.
Yeah, and that would be my, my only concern is if you, like I said, if you raise the wage, but you don't increase the budgets, compensate hours of work, now, now you've got, you know, you've got the same pool of money, but you're paying more money out of it, but you'll that, that up then, and you don't increase the budget itself, then you're gonna have, instead of, you know, 100 hours of overtime available, you're only gonna have 75 hours, because you're paying more, more money per hour. So, then I'd be, or the same thing I was saying, you know, end up with people that won't want to work, because wages are low. But I guess we're back to the.
Are we increasing the budget with the published numbers, raise part-time wages? They're not in there. That's the question.
I mean, I, I think we do, I mean, I think that's one of the first things that we need to look at. I mean, we, you know, once a guy, I say, we, I felt very strongly last year when we did the wage increases for the, for the other full-time employees of the county, which is 100% the right thing to do, and I'm very thankful that council felt the same and made them changes. But we knew that our part-time wages are not, you know, we're, we're not keeping up, we're not, not being able to find people to fill them positions and stuff, you know?
I'd rather pay, uh, give part-time more money instead of putting in a whole bunch of new positions. We got a couple million dollars or so, but can't find it, but I can understand. And with, with part-time, they don't even give them benefits, so they save them a lot of money. That, gotta put something in.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I can tell you, I'm very, very strong on the point of doing something for the part-time workers. I think it's long overdue, and I think, uh, like I said, we made a lot of corrections last year, full-time wages, time.
Just amazed how lucky the county is to get the part-time help they get. They get some, they get part-time help and.
Good fight.
That you didn't really put a whole lot of extra for PT period, or did you just go with what individual office holders?
I went with what the office put in, but it's not changed the part-time, because I didn't know what council was looking at for the raises. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you what these departments, how many hours are expected. Um, and, and along those lines, I would suggest you leave the part-time the way it is. Um, if you, in, uh, as far as budget, you increase the wages, which I think would be great, um, the departments, if they go over, will have to come in and see you, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's a great inconvenience for anyone personally.
And they can transfer.
They can do transfers.
Ah, there we go.
And Teresa will, will guide you, she'll be very helpful in guiding you.
Bill.
But I guess, I guess that's what we come back to, we're, we're back to answering the same question at this point in time. So we had a motion, but it was rescinded, uh, due to the fact that, well, due to the fact.
Jerry seconded it.
On.
You asked about who.
I'm confused.
Yeah.
So, uh, Sheila made the motion and, uh, Jerry seconded it, but then he said that.
I'm gonna make the motion again that we.
We were pulling it back to decide whether we wanted to add this in or if we were gonna leave it the same, so.
So if we don't increase the budget, do we have money for part-time raises?
Yeah, I would say.
What you're saying is that each of us, who has a issue, people just come to the council and they're like, you should transfer once it's all.
At that time, yes.
And I would think that.
Okay.
If you look at how we did this year's matrix overhaul, the budgets were done before the council ever landed on all of those final wage numbers and I don't know if there was enough cushion that we haven't or if it had been some, but we went into this year doing basically the same thing with a lot more employees on the full-time set than they have on part-time, so. Or, I think that might be the right answer is because otherwise, you're gonna have to figure out how much of that roughly one forty goes into general and how much of that is commissioners' budget for FICA versus individual budget for wages, we have a rough sense of
what the overall impact is gonna be if the council reached what I discussed tonight. Without, I mean, we just know that maybe seeing transfer in or additional.
Here on a rolling basis.
No, and that, and that, you know, I mean, I think that's the point that, you know, Jeff was saying, we were saying earlier, you know, like I said, that, that was the only thing that that I was bringing up as a concern was the fact of, if you do it that way, the council, which I, you know, I guess it's not a big worry for me, but for the rest of the board, it will be here next year, those that will be joining the board, you know, you got two ways to look at it, you can either increase, you know, put the money in and then figure out how we wanna do sell it out by departments, by whatever math formula we come up with, or you leave the numbers the way they are in overtime. You know, we increase the wages, we pay out of it, we tell the funds to own, those that run out of money, we won't be coming back and either doing a transfer or an additional. And the board knows that going into next year, and if they're good with that, then I think it works. And I would agree, probably in mathematical sense, it makes the most sense because it is going to be very difficult, it's probably one of the hangups that we've had is figuring out which piece of the pie goes to which department and where, if you do it this way, it's really irrelevant. You work it out one by one as they go down the road for all of next year.
Okay, I'm gonna make my motion again, publish the budgets as is.
Second.
With HR. And on that note, we outsource IT, and I've had multiple department heads say how well that works, outsourcing IT. So I don't know that outsourcing a major department is always the best answer. Okay, so that's my motion.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to publish the budget, uh, as been presented, uh, with the exception of the additional for, the additional money for the HR department. And for. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, with.
The one to advertise the budget with the HR.
Oh, you said different there.
No, with I mean, with the exception adding HR into the budget, I guess maybe I didn't work quite right, but.
Well, now I'm confused.
I'm making a motion to publish the budget that we have been presented thus far, including the HR budget.
We have a second? Any further discussion? I'm not repeating.
Yeah, I got some.
Alrighty.
You say the HR, I, I, you know, I think we need HR, I think we need to look through stuff, but did you remember how good IT worked? I don't know if you were here so, here then, well, it didn't work out so good when we had in-house IT.
Like, to be fair, that was before the wage updates that we were paying like systems analyst wages for nineteen or whatever.
Like, I don't need you to make a decision about it tonight, I just.
I'm just saying, it didn't work out good, we feel like most front-end thought leaders that anybody ever did. Probably the last guy, Karen.
I think, you know, from I guess having the, the funding in there, not, not necessarily that it'll be in-house or be out of house, or, or we can leave it out, we do it as an additional later on when we decide, it's, it, you know, but the motion right now on the floor is to.
I'd rather do that.
It can be an additional in January or February or March or.
Okay, well, we have a motion and we have a second, can we vote?
Exactly, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, we've heard the discussion of different ideas, so now either we vote in favor or we don't vote in favor and then it moves to the next level. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three to three, lucky.
Yeah, lucky. Well, I'm gonna vote to have it in the budget, so we have it, and then as discussed, we will look into other options and see which way we wanna fund it.
Before my connotations across the table, I'm gonna say it. The whole thing about this budget deal is that if you don't say it's in there, we're not. So we can very well. This is just a budget. We don't send it down there. True.
But, but this budget is notifying taxpayers that this is what we're looking at. You're notifying all the taxpayers that you've got a ten million dollar budget. I'm not sending this to the DOJ, I'm sending this to the taxpayers. Okay, once that's done, then you have a public hearing to allow the taxpayers to come in and say, you know, yes, no, whatever, and then after that, you approve the budget in October, you can change it, you can lower it at any time. Between now and October, you cannot, between the time I publish, I knew that budget, you cannot raise it.
So. I'm correct, that's not, that's not.
Right, right, yes.
Well, my problem was, we got a ten million dollar budget and we're only bringing in eight, that doesn't look so good to me. That's my problem, I mean, that's what I believe, you know, I, I don't have, I wanna meet together with the, somebody else and find out other stuff, but like, we have a big budget. But, you know, we're too short.
I guess that's what I would challenge everybody to do if they, you know, feel that the budget is, is, is not, uh, is not, not good for the, for the community, is to go back, look at the budgets and come back with things to cut, because, I'm gonna say this, it's gonna probably offend some people, I apologize if it does, but we have the same conversation every year, we need to cut, we need to do this, we need to do that. And then when the day comes to vote on the budget, it's voted on and because nobody comes back with let's get rid of that, let's take this out, and, and here's why we should do it. You know, you know, it may be a conversation of, well, you know, we need to cut that, no, okay, well, why should we cut it? It's cut, you know, so, I mean, if everybody goes back and does what the taxpayer elected us to do, and does it due diligence, looks over it, comes back with with some, uh, uh, reasonable limitations and cuts, then that's what this meeting, what these meetings are for, is put it on the floor and make them decision.
Yep.
So, my understanding that I'm going to publish the budget with everything that you have on your list, plus HR, plus fifteen thousand dollars that I don't have in the budget anywhere, or community foundation. Am I correct? Am I correct? My understanding of currently?
Yes, that was, that was the motion that was made, yes.
Okay, so, let me ask you this. This community foundation, fifteen thousand dollars, you never put in the budget anywhere. Where would you like for it to come out of?
One one close, just like to the services and.
I, I, I was gonna say too, I, you know, that's, that's where we take everybody else's out of, so we take it from the same place.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
But that, that's why, you know, you know, we made up that list and, you know, sent it out for everybody to see and, you know, uh, you know, there, we received some responses, we did. Alright, so, any further budget discussions, anything?
I think we gotta get rid of supplemental property tax. Right. Anybody else think that's wrong for the working-class people to pay my property taxes? Working-class people. Not, not, I shouldn't say that, that doesn't mean, people that gotta pay payroll tax, pay my property taxes. And I, and I, they, then you also pay family expresses, series, everybody, yours, anybody owns property, it's supplemented a little bit. And, and then we already have payroll tax, that's maybe the third or fourth highest, I don't know. We used to be number one, but not anymore. We did lower that, and I just feel that that, you know, as far as trying to get people in the community and stuff, that we should we tax them and pay supplementing property for a lot of people that probably don't even live in it.
Now that, that's always been my concern is, is with the way the tax system is set up, you know, people make income from this county, but live outside this county. We collect zero from because you pay income tax to the county that you, that you died in. And that's one of the reasons we made some of the changes we did back at the time, was to try and give them, you know, and lower our income tax from being, as Mike said, the number one, try to offset some people that because we have a large number of people who own property in this county, that don't live in this county, and way you can only really gain more revenue from them folks because there's, you know, let's just, you know, I'm gonna use agriculture as a, as a hit, but, you know, they're still farming that ground, they're still running the same tractors, the same equipment, if they're in an accident, using our same fire department, our same ambulance and stuff, but aren't paying in as a person who lives here and pays income tax does, they're getting twice where others.
Uh, Ken, oh, I, Mike and I, we've had this conversation a dozen times probably.
At least.
I, 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 I agree fully, and we, when we did the income tax restructuring in twenty twenty, those supplemental taxes were accounting for about thirty-five percent of the income tax rate. It is down now, still, to thirty percent, but that was because the entire rate came down. I think it is a good idea, I've always believed it, but I don't think unless we wanna bring in Baker Tilly or another company to do an analysis of how much that would affect our, uh, circuit breaker losses, that that's something the county should look into unless and until we start seeing solar projects have their net assessed value, their assessed value come on and bring that down, because we're talking here about these two million dollar gaps between forecasted revenue and budget, and I don't think we wanna take a risk of chipping away what are right now relatively minor circuit breaker losses because all of that supplemental does have the benefit to the county of ensuring that we minimize those losses. I, I think it's a long-term, it's something the council absolutely should do. I, along the same vein, if and and when solar projects come onto the tax rolls and start pushing down assessed value, I think that might be for the time for the council to look at lowering these and revisiting the possibility of increasing the cume cap development rate when it's not gonna be as impactful on property taxpayers' taxes as it is now. Because I think we still have like half or a third of the maximum rate we could add, but that's another tax, and we've just implemented taxes from the courthouse and the justice center, so I, I think we should be careful about any additional impact on property taxpayers and on potential county revenue until we see what sort of, say, extracurricular revenue is actually coming into the county and what sort of impact they're having on our net assessed value.
Thank you, Doc, to a little quicker than I did there. No, and, and that was like, I, I've had these, you know, I know me and Nathan have had these conversations, I would like talk about, or, and I I agree with it in principle, that would be my only thing is without, you know, uh, knowing what the impact of it is.
Yeah, but even if we lowered it a little bit.
Yeah, it.
It, it's like, we've been kicking it, the can for however many years.
Four years since last time.
Yeah, and like we just keep kicking the can, yeah, it might hit circuit breakers, you know? It hits it, well, that's why.
Yeah, I, I don't think it would, but.
It will, with Dairyville, rental houses, I get all my rental houses on circuit breaker.
But I know that, from what I understand, I've only got one rental property, I don't know, know it that well, but I understand that's probably one of the larger components, I know some people own a number of rentals in Placite County, and that's one of, probably one of their biggest complaints, is the fact that post-rentals, lot of rentals hit that.
But then they're also supplemented too by people that live in their house.
Right.
I don't know, I just I guess it I could see they, oh, you know, wait and see, but.
And you're right that if you do it, if you could base it in, right now, it is point three five percent. The maximum standard tax rate that you can budget is two point five percent, and we're actually behind, so if you can drop it from two eighty-five to two point seven five, wouldn't it make the entire supplemental, you could reduce it partially and start getting worse a little bit? And maybe two percent on vote, but.
Yeah, it's just the thought.
No, I think it's great discussion, I mean, I, I think that's.
I just think everybody needs to go and get their budget, see what they want, and like Ken said, bring it back next meeting and everybody had a list and we can, we could, I don't know, with somebody, if you find somebody, or you find somebody that, as far as HR, I guess, what other counties are doing, because I've only talked to two counties, anybody else? No, I got, I'm very wrong.
I was saying, I was just gonna say, I mean, you know, as for the, you know, you know, as for the budgets and stuff, I mean, something maybe that would would help so everybody's not, you know, and that's up to you guys, I mean, do you wanna look at, you, do you wanna look at all the budgets, or would you rather just take the budgets that feel laid out with everybody's departments and, you know, each one of us tackle them individually, you know, uh. We gotta look over. Just wanna look at the budget from top to bottom.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I mean, that's. Yeah, I, I did, I mean, I should have a copy of it, but I'll, I'll, I'll reemail it out with. Okay, but no, I'll, I'll re-mail it out so everybody has it, yes. But. Alright, there's no further discussions.
All of my point, is there any type of habitat on the council's local justice? Is it there is, you have to get moving on the public hearing schedule, after the events that we changed. We won't leave the meeting for another year, but we should get moving the discussions at the September meeting and a.
Public hearing at your October. Public hearing at your October meeting, if you have any interest in bringing the income tax rate down a little bit by reducing some of the supplemental.
Well, after discussion, I, I kinda agree with you, let's say.
Okay.
Cause it's, uh, you know, you know, we got the jail, the courthouse, that we ever start getting any other income or.
All right. Any more comments or anything? Well, any public comment? All right, we'll adjourn our special session for eight twenty-six, twenty-four. Thank you, folks.